Welcome to the October 10th meeting of the Westford Select Board.
Recording in progress.
All right, now we're doing it. Welcome everybody to the October 10th meeting of the Westford Select Board. We're happy you're here tonight. First, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by Chris.
Are we supposed to say that we're recording? Isn't that?
Yes, we are recording.
I didn't hear you say that.
All right.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is our open forum. Let me first ask if anyone on the board has any things for open forums.
Do not.
So, Sunday afternoon, October 22nd, 12 to 4 at the 4-H Fairgrounds is our second annual International Block Party, all being Westfordian members. This year added with support from the DEI Committee, so it's actually now where Westford is an International Block Party and Diversity Fair. So, food, crafts, dancing, entertainment, 4-H Fair, it's free, come on down.
That sounds great. Can you say the time again, Scott?
Sunday, October 22nd, I think it's 12 to 4. There'll be signs in the common in about a couple of days.
That sounds great. I did notice on the common that this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so just call that to mind. And Westford has resources. If anyone needs to reach out, they can call down hall and get connected.
That's correct.
Okay, anyone from the public have any open forum items for tonight? Welcome.
Thank you, I'm Lynn Cohen. I just want to remind everyone that Thursday night is the League and the Town. We do it together, the Town Meeting Preview, 7 o'clock, it's via Zoom. It's on, the link to register is on the League website. I'm not sure if it's on the Town website yet. But again, it's 7 o'clock on this Thursday night, and it is the best way to get prepared for Town Meeting.
That's great. Well, thank you. Thank you to the League for hosting that excellent event. Any other items for public forum tonight? Okay, we will move to consent agenda. First on the consent agenda is a request for the Town Common and Bandstand. The event is at Veterans Day Program. The applicant is Ryan Kobly, the Veteran Service Officer. The date is November 11th, from 8 to 2, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Also, a street road closure. The event is a Neighborhood Block Party. The applicant is Maureen Wilczynski. Location is 10 through 30 Burn Avenue. The date is October 21st, 2023, with a rain date of October 22nd, 2023. And the time is from 1:30 to 6:30 PM. Questions about those? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Approved, subject to public safety comments.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Thank you so much. The 707 item is a discussion on the proposed historic preservation restriction and affordable housing restriction related to the acquisition redevelopment of the former Recultable Banker property, 70 Boston Road, considering the anticipated appropriation of community preservation funds, which will be on the October 16th special town warrant. Welcome, Ellen.
Thank you, Tom.
And I think we agree that Marilyn would just say a few words first.
Let's say a few words, that's all right, from CPC. Thank you. Thank you. If I can read it, if you don't mind.
Please.
The Community Preservation Committee considered one application for funding in this cycle. The project is titled "The Drew Farmhouse: Preservation and Workforce Housing." The CPA funds requested are $1,450,000. The committee voted unanimously to support this project for the areas of historic preservation of the building and affordable housing. A historic restriction in perpetuity would be placed on the building. The affordable housing would be for five workforce apartments. Habitat for Humanity of Greater Loel will construct a sixth apartment. In addition, the CPA committee felt an additional benefit for the area where the Drew house is, and that it would keep part of Boston Road from deteriorating any further. Historic preservation is something we all strive for. The Addams House comes to mind, and this was purchased also assuring a permanent historic restriction. No money is given to the applicant prior to the work. Bills are submitted for work done, approved by the Finance Department, signed by a CPA member, and only then paid. This project is supported by the League of Women Voters, the Affordable Housing Committee, the Historic Commission, as far as I know, the FINCOM, and the ZBA. Yeah, just slowly.
Thank you. And I think FINCOM is going to actually discuss and go into session with us tonight and discuss that. So I don't...
I had to stand, I'm sorry if I'm misinformed.
No, no, no problem at all.
Just for Article 3, not for Article 6.
Okay, so the order taken is Article 6.
Correct.
Great, thank you for that.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, please, go ahead, John.
How did you arrive at the numbers, the $1,450? How did you arrive at that number?
That was the amount asked for, the application. We didn't put in any of our own numbers. We're not buying the building. This is purely for the apartments and the historic restriction, which would stay in perpetuity. If anything ever happened and this house was sold, that would never change.
I just want to note for the board, Catherine Klein from KP Law is on the Zoom in case any board members have questions during this discussion.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I ask a question for Marilyn while she's still here.
Yeah, let's ask Marilyn questions first and then...
So, I know, I've seen the fund balances through our packet. But I guess for the benefit of those who might be listening, the CPA clearly, or CPC, I'm sure considered what we have for balance is what we might need in the future and believe this is money...
We're in pretty decent shape. You know, the amount of money that we have, I don't want to quote exactly what we have, but I'm sure it's two or three million dollars, of which I think a million may be something that we would need later on for a project that we had done. But we also haven't gotten our money for September. See, we never do this out of cycle. This is one of the first things in a very long time that we're doing out of cycle. We always wait till the money comes in September, and then we have our meeting. This is something, though, that we could have lost the house because it would have been sold to somebody else. So it's one of the rare times, we've done it before, but one of the rare times when we consider something now. But in terms of our financial position, I'd say we're in pretty good position.
Any other questions from Marilyn? Chris?
Yeah, just actually a question for Town Council and for the benefit of folks watching in the room. Could you potentially give us some feedback on what the historic preservation restriction really means in terms of this building going forward?
Well, I don't, yeah, good evening. I don't have a lot of detail yet on the historic preservation restriction, but it would be in perpetuity, and it would be, my understanding is, the exterior only of the building. That's generally what happens. But I don't have the specific details regarding what would be preserved other than the exterior of the building.
And that's normal at this juncture of the process? That that's all the details that you need or would be furnished with?
No, no, I won't need additional details in order to, you know, to assist the town in drafting the preservation restriction. But this is just all coming together in a pretty quick, quick fashion. So, yes, I mean, not only would we need details as to what is going on, you know, the exterior now, but we would need to know what renovations were permitted, and that would be addressed in the historic preservation restriction as well.
May I speak to that, Tom?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Ellen Hardy, President of the Drew Farm, Inc. We, in fact, have met with the Historical Commission. David Gutbrot is here. We have sent to your office the sample of the Paris Center for the Arts Historic District Preservation deed restriction, which you signed on August 15th. That's our template. And we have, and I have it here, if David doesn't have it with him, the four points about the exterior that was agreed to and voted unanimously by the Historical Commission at their meeting of September 20th, and it has been forwarded to your office. I'd hoped that council had it by now. But those have all been defined, and we did all of this homework upfront so that we would not be this here late in the game. All of this was done in July and August, and I'm sorry, it's just coming to the board's attention. But I have that list, and I know David Gutbrot is here, if you'd like to hear his input into what they're asking us to do and what we have agreed to in terms of the historic preservation.
Okay. Before we do that, let me just ask, any other questions from Marilyn?
I got one more, go ahead.
Yep, let's handle Marilyn, and then let's see if there's any updates.
Excellent.
And then we can move to board questions. So let's, anything from Marilyn?
You talked about paying the money when the construction was being accomplished, or when...
I'm not hearing you, John, talk about...
When are you going to deliver the money?
Okay, when something gets done and a bill gets submitted, that's when the money gets paid. We don't pay upfront. We have the work done first, then you're billed, and then we pay.
So, forget the...
So if FINCOM said, "This is not part of what we said we'd pay for," I don't expect that to happen. I've been on this committee 23 years, it's never happened. But if they said, "This amount of money doesn't fit that category," or whatever, it would not be paid.
Okay.
So if someone came and did something else out, you know, on the grounds as opposed to in the building, we would not cover that, we would not pay for that.
So if the construction cost came in under the $1,450...
Then money gets returned to us, but not, never has been spent, that's the wrong way to say it. If the project costs less...
Okay.
Then CPC has its money in the bank. No money is given out except for the cost. The cost is confirmed, it's agreed upon, and usually I'm the one who signs that.
Okay, Scott, thanks, that was good.
I was really wondering what question for process, probably for Kristen or council, but just to make sure I understand this correctly. So, tonight we're talking about either endorsing or not the request at Town Meeting for the money. And then Town Meeting will then approve or not approve the money. And all we've done at that point, us and Town Meeting, is say, we agree that this project should go forward with 1.45 million of CPC money, but the contracting stuff has to get done. So any details on things like historic or whatever? It could be worked out with presumably the town, I guess you're a chief of procurement officer, right? So it would be...
Yes, it would be, your board would authorize a grant agreement to use the CPC funds. Your board would authorize a historic preservation restriction in concert with the Westford Historical Commission, and your board would authorize an affordable housing restriction, perhaps in concert with the Affordable Housing Trust and/or a state entity, and same with the historic restriction would, might be a state restriction as well.
But the point is...
So this is, the board would be recommending or not recommending Article 6 to go to Town Meeting, and then Town Meeting would have the next say in that. That is correct.
Even if it's like a two-step process, there's one step, which is, yes, the money is, this is the right use for the money. And secondly, is contracting. So if not every little jot and tittle is worked out tonight or Monday night, we can still do that.
Absolutely, yes. The meat of the work would most likely be done after Town Meeting, after we know that the town has authorized this to move forward.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Next, let's see if there's any updates. Ellen, do you have anything you'd like to share?
I did, I just, there were a couple of things that were brought up at your meeting two weeks ago that I would just like, we've done some homework on concerns that you have, and I just would like to respond to those if you think that's not worth your time. I won't do that, but I would like to. And also, just Scott, to your point, there is a clock ticking in terms of the purchase and sale that we've signed with the owner of the building. It's Inquire Realty in Madison, New Jersey. The closing is supposed to be October 27th. And obviously, to have that closing, the deed restrictions must be in place, which is exactly why our attorney, Melissa Robbins, and our Board of Directors started working on them in August and, you know, have submitted drafts to your office so that we wouldn't be doing it after Town Meeting or that by Town Meeting, we would have maybe not every I dotted and T crossed, but we'd be close. So, it will be when it will be, and if it's not ready, we'll have to tell the seller that we're not ready. But we have been working very hard to have it to council and to your office. The wording approved, because both the Affordable Housing Committee have met and have approved the draft Affordable Housing restriction that our attorney has drafted. And also, the Historical Commission, as I mentioned, met on the 20th, and they too have approved the draft of the historical restriction. Now it rests with Attorney Klein and your council's office. But that has been ongoing because it's very important to us to get that done. The three things that came up at your meeting before that I just wanted to not leave up in the air. Chris had several questions about the budget that we have put together for the Drew Farmhouse, and he's been very gracious to talk to our financial advisor, who is my husband, Mike. He is the financial partner in this. He doesn't sit on the Board of Directors of the Drew Farmhouse, but he is my other half and makes this happen. The question of the environmental assessment was of great concern, especially to Andrea, and I'm sorry she's not here this evening. But we did go, our attorney, Melissa Robbins, the following day, went to the Mass DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection Database. There is no record for 70 Boston Road of any inquiries or concerns about that property. You had in your packets today the email from Matt Salem, our conservation planner, saying the same thing. There's nothing that would indicate that that property was of concern environmentally. And thirdly, we have talked to Bill Febré, who is the principal of a environmental company, GEO... GEO, I'll get the other word. And he did a preliminary review of the property, went over the standing questions that you go over. Is the property being torn down? No. Were there ever animals housed there? No. Was it ever farmed? No. This two acres was not the orchard the abiding property was. Ever used to store pesticides? No. And the concern about, well, maybe somebody came off 495 and dumped their gas and old paint there, in Bill's opinion, that would not even show up on an environmental assessment. It's so minor, and it certainly would not indicate that any kind of remediation needed to be done. So in his very cursory review, he does not see that it's a property that that should be a concern to the town or to us as the buyers of the property. Tom, you were concerned that $250,000 per unit is too expensive. You're actually getting seven rather than five. The Drew Farmhouse is building out five of the units, but Habitat for Humanity has authority to build two in the barn. At the moment, they're only planning to start with a three-bedroom on the first floor. But for that 200, there will be seven units, not five, for the investment the town is making for affordable housing. Also, the figure you use for Town Farm, four of the units that David Hetterson is creating are market rate. He will have income coming in from four of those, so actually only 30 of those. So, ours are twice as much, I grant you that. And the other element to that was, and I mentioned it last week, and wanted to clarify it, obviously, Choice is using state funds. We didn't have time to do that. You will recall, the selectmen awarded the bid to David Hetterson, to Choice and his partner, in January of 2021, I think, and he will pay the town $580,000 for Town Farm. You agreed, he didn't have to pay that until all the permits were in place and his funding was in place. And his attorney just came to you six weeks ago and said they finally gotten the last letter from the state. That's a year and a half, maybe that's, yeah, I mean, it's maybe two years down the road. We didn't have the luxury of that. We were barely able to get the seller to agree to wait for the October 16th special town meeting. They were not going to wait for two years. So, that was an avenue we didn't want to go down for two reasons, and one of them was the time constraint. And the last concern that was brought up is that John's concern about whether or not the town could, in fact, use, whether the CP money could be used for the purchase of the property and not just the renovation, and that falls into Attorney Klein's department. She has let our council know that that's not exactly how she reads it, but I'm not going to speak for her. So if you still have concerns about that, John, I know that Katie can answer those for you. So I just wanted to follow up on those four areas, and that's...
Okay, thanks, Ellen.
Thank you, Tom.
And just, I guess my concern, just since it's my concern, it wasn't so much that it was too expensive, but just that it was a much higher allocation per unit than we'd seen in other projects. And it raised a question for me, as stewards of the money, do we either want special protections because of the unusually large amount of money per unit, or, and/or, just trying to get an understanding of what other things are in the pipeline and making sure that we're not foregoing an opportunity, maybe to create more opportunities by spreading that money across a broader base. So it was, it wasn't so much, I think the amount you're budgeting makes perfect sense for that property. So my concern is just as stewards of the money, are we making sure that we're protecting the law?
You know, I couldn't agree with you more, and I wish you could have done it more cheaply and not had to use that much CPA money. And my fantasy is, is that once Town Meeting understands what workforce affordable housing is, working people who just can't afford to live in this town, that the town will, in fact, do more, and that if it's a town program and you own the property, maybe you can do it more cost-effectively than we have. But this is a foot in the door to let the town know what workforce affordable housing is, and I hope it will open the floodgates of more applications to CPC for affordable housing money for this purpose. We've done a great job with senior housing, this is a place we have a gap, so I hope it will...
It's certainly an important need.
Yeah. And the number we've gotten from Jesse Byer is that there's currently $7 million in the CPC account of unexpended money. Not all of that's available for affordable housing, there are two other pots, but that's how much is currently in the CPC account as of the last time I spoke with him, which was in the last two months.
Let's do board questions for Ellen or for Attorney Klein, and then we will have a chance to have any questions from the public to follow on that. But let's start with questions from the board. Scott?
So I guess, so that was perfect for council. So, if you were doing a normal affordable housing project at 80% or under, then you'd have state money, and you'd have, you know, requiring for a lottery and so forth? So with, maybe Ellen will answer this one too, but with this one, it's a little different. It's 100%, not 80. There's no state money, but it's CPA money, which is kind of sort of state money. How does it work with, you know, is there a lottery system? And if there is, can it be like a local preference option to that lottery? Process-wise, again, how's that work in terms of funding?
I'm sure council can answer that, and then I can tell you how we perceive that.
Okay, council, could you address the...
Yeah, we would have a regulatory agreement that addresses those issues, and I'm working on that. I know Melissa has submitted something, and I will work with that document, but it needs to be substantially more comprehensive, in my opinion, in terms of how, you know, the lottery would work and the monitoring agency will work. And, you know, I think we need those same types of protections in place. And we are going to, so that, and as to the local preference, I'm not sure if that's addressed in the regulatory agreement, but I know that that's an issue for the town as well. But I am, I have just started to work on a regulatory agreement that will address those issues.
I guess my understanding from an earlier email and maybe some discussions is that there are currently other affordable housing, this is different because workforce housing, but there are currently some affordable housing that have some local preference, and they're governed by a lottery. And the net result of that is that there are many people who make it through the lottery because of the conditions of the lottery that, in fact, are not residents. What, how much, how different would this be than other local preference sort of lottery systems that we have in other projects? I guess what I'm getting at is, how sure are we that, in fact, we'll be able to do what we, what the goal of this is, which is to have all or mostly all of the units occupied by Westford residents?
Well, as you, as you're aware, if these were units on the SHI, we would be restricted to 70% if, if that. You know, and that you would get the approval of EO, HLC is it's now called, formerly DHCB. And so I'm researching, I don't think you can go above that threshold because there are fair housing, you know, federal and state laws that would govern this. And so what I'm trying to, and it seems, and 70% would be, well, actually, no, I thought there were five units. See, I'm just getting into this. I wasn't aware that there were six, so that would be, at this point, so that would be, we're over six. That's still over, I think, well, you'd be limited to four at the most of those six.
Actually, add the two for having it for, sorry, add the two for having it for sale, so it's only 45?
The five are, the five that will be administered by the Board of Directors of the Drew Farmhouse, Inc., those will be rentals, and we do want to definitely give Westford preference. That's exactly why Mike and I began this project, because the property we own at 40 Main Street, that's what we do. We thought that if there was no state money involved, and this is what our attorney has told us, that we are pretty much independent, except we're at the behest of the Community Preservation Committee that we'll work very closely with. We want Westford residents to have preference because it's Westford CPA money. You know, that's our tax dollars that has created that fund. It is not from a state grant. And that we do not have to be at the behold of the state list of eligible people for affordable housing because this is not state money that's making it happen. So Melissa and Katie and the town manager and I and Jesse met a week and a half ago. So these are ongoing discussions, but Scott's absolutely right. The reason we're doing this is to have people with Westford connections live there, and they are people who are making between 80 and 100% of the area mean income. That's all governed by HUD. Those tables are all in your affordable housing document. That's how we will determine the rents. But the choice would be that of the Board of Directors as we understand it, and we will definitely give preference to those who are from Westford and have, or work here, have any connection to Westford. That's our demographic that we're aiming at.
I think I understand the goal, and it sounds like both parties are continuing to talk about what the governing requirements or law, if the money is accepted as affordable housing would be, maybe it's the case that we'd have complete discretion, it could be Westford only. Maybe we'd fall under some other discretion, and we wouldn't be able to do 100% Westford.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I understand. John?
I ask the first time, when I looked at Chapter 44, and it said that if CPA funds were used to acquire the land or the property, then the town would have to own it.
Well, I defer to Kathy, because that's not what she has written to us as her interpretation of it.
Well, and then, that's, well, okay. And the other, let me just follow up with it. And then, I ask you if they, if any of the money that we were, of our CPA funds were going to use to acquire an interest or equity into the project, and you said some. And so that raised the question of whether or not the town would or should have any equity, because as I understand it, the nonprofit will hold the entire equity of the...
That's correct. They will own the building.
So any improvement or increases in that equity over time, whether you're reducing interest rates or whatnot, would accrue to the nonprofit?
Right, and will reduce the rents for the people who live there, that's how that money will be used.
Okay, go ahead.
I recommend it, or it suggested, I guess, to the town that they can, if they'd like to, they could put a note and, you know, that the grant monies or the loan, I guess the loan monies, I don't know how they'd be characterized, but that there can be a note and a mortgage. And we can work out some formula or some way so that if there is increased equity in the property over and above what's owed, you know, to the institutional lender, that that money could conceivably go to the town, it could go to the town and the, you know, to Drew Farmhouse, or that's up to the town. Those are conditions that it would put up on the CPA monies.
I think one thing that came up last week, and Andrea and I talked about this a little bit more, and this is, I guess, a question for both, whether there's been any discussion about this, is because of the kind of unusually large amount of money, the question was, let's say in 10 years, the organization, the Drew Farmhouse nonprofit, for whatever reasons, is not in a position to continue to administer the property, and then they sell the property on, maybe to another nonprofit that specializes in this area to kind of administer it. In that case, it could be that there was an increase in value and there could be some equity built up. My question was, in this maybe unlikely but possible scenario, would we be good stewards of the money if we said, if there is a transaction that generates any profit, that the town, that those extra funds would basically return for future use for affordable... that those extra funds would basically return for future use for affordable housing? So that's something that we talked about. I don't know if there's been any additional conversation about that. Again, the goal here would be just to make sure that we're protecting the town's interests and make sure that that money stays focused on affordable housing and doesn't end up through some accident.
Yeah, that's exactly what the note and the mortgage would protect.
Okay. Has there been any discussion about that?
I let Kristin know that I have another meeting at 7:30, so I'm happy to, you know, I'm sorry to have to leave, but I'll be working on this going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
John, I do want to see if Ellen has anything to comment on.
I like the idea of affordable housing in that place. I'm just looking for a way to make it happen and try to protect the equity that the town's putting into it, because it is a high cost, in my view. So we're, if you read the motion, it's going to be before the town, it says, the board, select board to enter into grant agreements with any private entities.
Yep.
So could we foresee a point where we would say, as part of that agreement, that any funds, you know, if you liquidate, or you change, or you refinance or something, and that results in additional equity, that that would somehow be, you know, after you've taken care of something, be put into affordable housing? Just go straight to affordable housing?
Willing to discuss anything, I can tell you that as Mike and I have put together the budget and as we worked on this, a surplus has been the last thing that has crossed our minds. You know, we have owned 40 Main Street now for seven years. We, it's not legally affordable, but the rates are affordable, what we charge for rent there, and it's a just break even. The rents pay for the upkeep of the building, they pay our mortgage, and there's not a nickel left. And that's how we want to run it. We didn't buy it to make money. We bought it to keep those five apartments affordable for the five people who were living there. That's how we envision the Drew Farmhouse working exactly the same way. And if the property is ever sold, there will be two deed restrictions on it. It must always be affordable housing, and the view from Boston Road must always maintain its historical integrity as it was built in 1865. That, to me, is not a property you're going to sell for a whopping amount of money, especially since we're the only people who have showed any interest in buying the property in the last year and a half, when it could have been a real estate office or a private home. So seeing it as a windfall that we would turn around in 20 years and make a lot of money on it never crossed our minds. But if it's important for the town to have that language and an agreement so that we can get on with this project and have five people move into those apartments in 2025, we are willing to talk to you about it.
Okay, I think that's probably as far as we're going to get on that specific topic tonight, because there's probably details that would need to be going over. Other questions for the board, and then I will give opportunity for...
I just want to make sure that we will have an opportunity to have those conversations at a later time. Is that your understanding?
Yes, because you will be entering into these grant agreements, and those will be specifics within those agreements. So it's at your discretion of how you sign off on those agreements.
That grant agreement is not critical to your being able to get the loan. If you get the restrictions on it, then you're clear.
That agreement is part of the deed restriction, is it not, Kristin? The one you signed for the Parrish Center for the Arts, there were two documents you signed that night. You signed the deed restriction, the historic preservation restriction, and you signed an historic grant agreement. It was two documents that the Board of Selectment signed August 15th for the Parrish Center for the Arts CPA money. So my understanding was that that grant agreement and the historic deed restriction...
There'll be three agreements that you sign. There'll be the CPC grant agreement to transfer the money, there'll be the affordable housing agreement, and there'll be the historic preservation agreement. So those will be the three agreements.
Okay, so it sounds like there's still some open questions, but we can actually address many of them at a later time in the process. Any other questions? John, do you?
No, I just say we've got some work to do.
Okay.
I hope you'll take advantage of the work that has been done. There's been a huge amount of work done, and we have drafted four-year board documents that I think Attorney Klein, you know, can pull up with, and our attorney has approved them, the Affordable Housing Commission has approved them, the Historical Commission has approved them, the work has been done, John. So now it's just a matter of having your board feel comfortable with that, but it has been done a lot.
You put in a lot of effort of this. I commend you for that. I mean, it's a worthy goal.
Yeah.
We're just trying to find a way to make it happen.
I appreciate that.
Protect the town's interests as best we see it.
Me too.
Okay, and we'll ask that as soon as this, the information is available, that we all get in our inbox.
Of course.
Any questions or comments from the public? Emily?
Emily Teller, nine Texas Road. I'm really disappointed in the attorney that she hasn't had all this stuff that Ellen and the attorneys have forwarded to her, and I really hope that...
She does.
There will be some expedited work so that this can come to you all really soon. It'd be nice to even get it before Monday. But I'm also here to ask, given what you've heard tonight and the documents that you'll be signing, that you have to further agree on the details, I hope at Monday's meeting of the select board before town meeting, that you will vote five to zero to approve this. I think it will mean a lot to the voters that night to have you take that stand. I think also Marilyn didn't mention, but as far as I know, the planning board and the Conservation Commission have also approved this unanimously. The planning board obviously wants to see the inside once that that has been made more definite, but I really hope that you'll be the leaders in the town and support this, knowing the care, the time, and the discussions that are still to come to finalize your concerns. Thank you.
Anything else from the public? I know that many of the questions that are out there Andrea has as well. I'm sorry, John, do you have something?
Well, I just, Ellen, I was wondering if she had anything else she wanted to add.
I'll go through and you through.
No, no problem.
Through the chair.
Through the chair. No harm, no ego here. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, thank you for your time.
So I guess the question is, it's a pleasure of the board to get our eyes on this stuff, make sure that we have Andrea as part of the discussion, and then come back and address this on Monday before the meeting. The alternative is we could address it now, in the interest of being inclusive and having her be part of it, because I know she had a lot of strong questions about it, I'd be a little bit more inclined to wait, but I'm open to...
I'm ready now, but I could pull the trigger now.
But I mean, in respect to Andrea, I could equally wait till Monday. Do you have any issues with us waiting till Monday?
Well, it would be very nice over the weekend, as we talk to people to say that the select board too have, and, you know, obviously at your meeting on, before the town meeting, you can reconsider the vote and include Andrea's vote, but to know what the four members who are sitting here tonight feel on this would be really nice to have.
We can't reconsider unless we want to know, right? So...
No, that's not true.
Well, we can, we can...
It's new information.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Thank you. I'm a better writer.
I've stepped down.
Yeah, we can get good guns on that. So do you feel like, are there any things in the documents or anything you've heard tonight that makes you feel like we need to see more? I guess that's the question. Or do you, okay, sounds like the pleasure of the board, so with that in mind, I'll entertain a motion to...
I just want to say one thing. So I know when I, I think it was about 20 years ago, that's when I joined the Full Housing Committee, and the very first thing we had was this campaign as a poster of, here is a firefighter, here's a teacher, here's a nurse, and they work in your town, then they can't afford to live in your town, and that's why we had to have affordable housing. Now, we actually had a case where we had a rent, affordable unit come up, and we had one of our officers, police officers, applied and could not get it because with his overtime pay, he made too much money to qualify. Without the overtime pay, he couldn't get the loan qualified. So there is this rather bizarre need that the state has really done its best job to avoid meeting that this does address.
Thank you, Scott. So I'll entertain a motion to recommend.
So are we doing that in the next item, though, with the finance committee?
So the finance committee has already voted their recommendation on Article Six.
Right, on that one. That's the next agenda item.
That's part of that agenda item.
Are we moving on to that to do their recommendations?
I think we can take that out of order since the joint session is around number three. We don't need to be in session together with them, so...
No, that's fine. Yeah, I'm just saying, for the people who's following along, that's what we're kind of moving on to.
Yeah, we're just jumping ahead since a lot of people are here for that, so we can address that now.
That's fine. So I'll make the motion that we support the CPA application, Article Six.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. See your town meeting.
Seven twenty item is special town meeting, joint meeting with finance committee. So I see, Christina, that you're here. If you'd like to call your committee into session.
Yeah, I'm just logging on. Hari and Shelby. And Shinji. You have three online. Hari, Shelby, and Shinji.
So my committee is called order.
Excellent. Thank you. So I think the item that remains is Article Three. Dan, what's your pleasure? Do you want to just review what Article Three contains, or do you want to, we've done that before, do you want to answer questions?
Sure. We actually have several members of the capital planning committee here. Jeff Goodwin outside the hall, we have some employees online that can answer some specifics. I'm happy to run through like a high purview if you like.
That'd be great.
Great. All right, so under the first motion for Article Three, we have three projects that are recommended be funded through free cash. The first one is the DPW garage compression compressors for the HVAC system that cool most of the second floor. We do have a quota of this for $12,500, and there is an extra $2,500 in there for refrigerant in case it needs to be replenished. And the reason for the request in October is that there's quite the lead time nowadays for this type of equipment, and we'd like to have it in place before we need to cool the building again this spring and summer. Next up, we have another request for the public buildings for $200,000. This is police station attic and pipe insulation. You know, they're having some major issues up there right now where the HVAC's not working, and it's mostly related to moisture and humidity. They need to remove the inflation, fix whatever piping they find underneath that needs to be replaced, re-insulate it, and then retrocommission the entire project again, all the piping. The building has, you know, been upwards of 90, 100 degrees during some of these heat waves we've had this summer, so it's been very uncomfortable in there. The good news is, is that Jeff Goodwin originally came back with a higher quota of around $300,000, but once everything came in, it was lower to about $200,000. So this is cheaper than we thought it would be from what was originally presented to the capital planning committee. And then the next project coming for free cash is for the Stony Brook Bridge resident relocation right away. So for this project, the MASTDOT is replacing the Stony Brook Bridge, that's a value of about $2 million. Over that bridge and the railroad bridge, that's right before it, there's one driveway that goes to a residence's house, and they need to be relocated during the construction of the bridge in about two years. So we did originally appropriate $50,000 at the annual town meeting to hire a consultant, and the good news is, we think we can reduce this by $100,000, this request, so it'd be 150 total. We'll either do this tomorrow during the motions meeting or Monday at the special town meeting on the floor. But we do have to move that resident out of the residence just because there's no emergency access to them. So it's under the Uniform Relocation Act. We have to pay for the rent, utilities, moving costs, and illegal fees this resident may require by having to vacate the premises and the family. They have been very cooperative with the town so far, and they're working well with the DPW office during this project. So those are the first three. I'll pause there and see if we have any questions.
First, any questions from select board? Okay. Any questions?
Questions from finance committee?
Just one.
Yeah, come up, thanks, Tom. Tommy, you just...
Tom Laflambe, member of finance committee, Paulie Road. For the public buildings for police station, I'm assuming that did not fall under the energy consultant at all.
That's correct. That's not going through AMRESCO.
I guess related, is there any energy gains or benefits from this, or is it really primarily just in order to be an acceptable environment for people to actually work in?
There should be efficiencies with any new projects, but I don't have specifics on what those would be.
Jeff is...
Can you just open the door? We do know that with the insulation, we will see a lot of efficiency with both the heating and the cooling that we have not realized, so we do see that there'll be those types of efficiencies moving forward with this project.
Hi, Jeff, welcome. At this point, we're just fielding questions, and there was a, well, my question was, are there, do we expect any energy efficiency gains out of the project in the...
For the police station insulation project?
Absolutely, yes. It's not easy to pinpoint exactly how much, but there should be significant energy gains from the insulation job in the attic.
Thank you. Other questions, other questions from finance committee? Anyone else have any questions? Okay, I think we're good. So the motion is for the whole thing, so maybe we continue in a second half?
Yeah, we usually take all at once, but yes. So the next two projects are for the Water Enterprise, in total, it's $600,000. The first one for $350,000 is for the Forge Village Treatment Plant repairs. Basically, Filter Three, it's losing all sorts of media, which is a bad thing. It could be a problem with several different issues, but basically they have to remove everything within the filter, which is a very costly and labor-intensive project, and then they have to completely replace all the media that they take out as well. So they're looking for $350,000 for this project, and they're hoping to do it now, so it's online by the time that the spring season comes on, people begin watering their lawns again. And the next one is for the PFAS Treatment Plant Facilities preliminary design. This is an additional $250,000 that the Water Enterprise is requesting to appropriate. It's to, it's for the proposed PFAS facilities at the Forge Village and Nutting Water Treatment Plants, and, you know, there'll be a summary of proposed sites for them, developing initial permitting tasks, geotechnical investigations, and developing preliminary site plans for the tanks that will later come on line, the plants. I'll pause there again.
Yep, any questions from the board, any questions about these two? Okay. Christina?
Anything from finance committee?
Any questions from the public? Okay, thanks, Dan, let's keep going.
All right, and the second motion is to bond $1 million for the Blanchard rooftop units. Back in March, the town did approve at town meeting the $6.4 million project to replace the roof, and again, the voters approved that at the May town election for the debt exclusion. These are costs that the MSBA does not pay for the costs associated with these units, so we're responsible for those. However, they will pay for the costs of removing and reinstalling these units, so it's best to do this project while we're doing the roof. It will save upwards of, Jeff, is that $100,000 or so?
Yes.
Yes. So it's more cost-effective to do at the same time. Because of the million-dollar price tag, we are recommending to issue bonds on this. As we always do, if, you know, the project comes under budget, this is the engineer's estimate, so not the formal bid, if it comes under budget, we will not spend more money, we will not borrow more money, we'll just bond less, and we'll have a lower debt payment from year to year.
Great. Questions from the board? Okay, thank you. I guess this is, so this is not falling, obviously, under the AMRESCO sort of efficiency program because of the timing, but Jeff, could you just speak to what considerations have been made around energy efficiency for these units?
So we did take a look at possibly electrifying and installing heat pump units because of the, there's only, there's only five or six units on the roof that currently supply just air conditioning only. If we were to make that change to heat pumps, we still would have continued to have to use the existing boiler plant, which was recently replaced not too long ago, so we felt that at that point it wasn't fiscally feasible to really install electric heat pumps on the roof at this point.
Okay, so the energy profile is going to be similar to what it has been?
Correct, but the new units will be significantly more efficient than what was on, the 30-year-old units that are on there currently, so...
Okay. Excellent. Okay, great, explained it perfectly. So, let's see, I think by practice, we typically follow the finance committee.
So finance committee, I'll entertain a motion to recommend Article Three.
Second?
So moved, second, okay. I'm going to do a roll call since we're virtual. Hari? That's an I. Can you just unmute?
Aye.
Thank you. Shinji?
Aye.
Shelby? I saw her mouth move, I think that counts.
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I'm an I, so that...
Seven to zero.
That's unanimous, and for our board will do the same thing, entertain... That's unanimous, and for, for our board will do the same thing, entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All those in favor? Excellent. Thank you so much. Anything else on this, or can we let the Finance Committee go?
We can have the Finance Committee adjourn.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn Finance Committees?
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for joining us tonight. Okay. Next up is the 740 item, which is the update from the Communications Advisory Committee. We welcome Bob Jeffries.
We also have Mike Wells, who is joining remotely.
Good evening, Mike.
Bob, is there anyone else that you're expecting to join remotely, or anyone else?
Sarah Fletcher's here.
Okay, great.
Oh. This is really her baby, so.
Welcome, Sarah. Sarah, do you want to come on up?
Oh, sure.
Both Sarah and Bob, if you could introduce yourself. Great, great.
Okay. I'm Bob Jeffries, Chair of the Communications Advisory Committee.
Sarah Fletcher, Executive Director of Westford Community Access TV.
And Mike Wells is out there somewhere. He's the Town Director of...
Yes.
Bob, the floor is yours.
Okay. Hopefully, you got our, we've given this to you previously, and you should have gotten it again, kind of the 10-year projection of where we're going. And if you look at it, we're looking at a decline estimated at 5% a year, and that's kind of consistent with what we've been seeing. This year's budget, if you look at it, is quite robust, but we don't spend it all. We put a fair amount away to try to deal with the fact that we lose revenue every year as less and less people subscribe. The only people that support Community Access TV directly are the subscribers to cable TV, which I think we've talked about before. It seems like all of those who go through YouTube and View and through the Internet, it's the same wires, it's the same delivery, but there's no cut for WCAT. The numbers run in such a way that the portion paid by subscribers is projected to fall from approximately $400,000 this year down to $233,000 in 10 years. If that. We're not even convinced of that, because it seems like people are deserting at a quicker rate. Westford CAT has been excellent at fundraising. This year was a banner year. It had a lot of one-timers in there, like employee retention credit. So we're not, we're forecasting, though, that there will be a continual increase in fundraising, because we look at subscribers, we look at members and businesses in town. But it's not sustainable, because if you look at the budget, at the end of 10 years, it is still at $400,000 total. It will not be the same WCAT as we do now at $400,000. One of the questions the board asked was, what percentage is government? And the best we can do is take the $400,000 divided by three and say it's $134,000, because the public access piece, the education piece, and the government piece all consume approximately the same amount of time and get the same amount of coverage. So just government, $134,000. I'm not sure if you've got mass accesses. For some reason, I'm not sure if that went through or not.
I think we didn't get that, no.
But it lists, and Sarah can talk much more directly on this, it lists all of the CAT stations around the state and what, how they're organized and what their funding is like. And if you look at suburban 503C corporation cats of approximately the same number of subscribers as Westford, you'll find that the budgets range from $130,000 to, I think, $441,000. So Westford's at the high end of that, but you also have to look at how many, what, the number of subscribers, is that most of the town, or is it part of the town, you know? So the percentage of people that are subscribing here out of the total population is different in every one of these communities. So it's a little hard to read this, but Westford CAT is right in the range, and it provides a lot more than you'll find in other ones. We also looked into the possibility of doing regionalized service. And what it does is it takes the PEG money, and if you farm out the public access, say, you have to pay the regional that amount of money. It won't change the franchise agreement with the town of Westford. You'll still get the same percentages, but the money will have to go outside. And in discussing this with the board of WCAT, if anybody was regional, it would actually be WCAT, because all of the surrounding towns, for the most part, are government-supported and not 503s. So it's doubtful, we're not looking for any of them to attempt to pick it up, because it's, Groton isn't going to agree to cover anything for us. And the amount of money we're going to have to shift over to them just takes it away from WCAT's ability to provide exactly the same service. So hopefully, in a nutshell, that's where we find ourselves, and how much we're going to be down is, if you think of the rate of inflation going forward over the next 10 years, that amount is the shortfall, because the net present value is $400,000. They provide a good $100,000 or so of fundraising money, and primarily, a lot of it goes to the news presentation that they do. And one of the things that we think is critical about the town continuing to support this, and we're not asking for any money, we haven't asked for any money. But it is critical to communications in this town. And I think we sent you what WCAT has been able to put together now that we no longer really have a town newspaper at all. And if this works, you'll...
We'll just see if we can get it up. You can keep talking if you want. We'll get it up, we promise.
This is exactly what WCAT doesn't enjoy, is dead air. If you want to add to this, Sarah.
Yeah, like, like Bob said, we're not asking for any money. We just want to sort of look at the forecast, and, and it's very difficult to forecast a 10-year projection on technology and what people are likely to do. We have a very substantial amount of money in the bank that would cover us for a year plus. We, I actually brought with me our audited financials for everybody, so I could leave them here tonight for the, for the select board and the town to review. We're in very good, strong standings this year. Has been a very good year for fundraising. We've, in fact, have brought in over $200,000 in fundraising money, grants and support. We do run our own events and do our sponsorships and many other ways to bring in as much money as we can. But even with all of that, even with the, you know, even as we increase our capacity to do fundraising, we're still looking down the road at a deficit. And whether or not any kind of streaming bill does get supported, and we appreciate the support that the select board did give us in, you know, sending a letter to the state. It doesn't look like that's going through in any time soon. Hopefully, it'll, Massachusetts will follow suit with some of the other states around the country that have done some taxation on the streaming services. But right now, it doesn't look like that's going through. So we just have to, you know, kind of look at a plan that's going to cover us for the next 10 years.
Okay, if you want to...
Want to go back to it? Yes, we're absolutely.
Back to it, because I think it's, if you haven't seen it, it's really the one place you can get a lot of the news of Westford any, on any given...
This is our Sunday, this is the third edition of our Sunday E-News magazine. Ben and Pravar and Melanie have been doing the writing that's going in here. Pravar is a senior at Westford Academy covering sports now. We're including events, and I think Ben is keeping a few articles kind of quiet until the issue goes out, so that you have a good incentive to read some news articles that you haven't seen yet on social media and the like. But it's a, it's a real, it has a good feeling. It has a lot of information in it. You can read the articles. You can watch the videos within the document, as well as opening them up to another page. There's opportunities for sponsorship. We're looking for an underwriter. So those opportunities are also there for the community. And publishing your events, not only on our calendar, but we're now publishing them in this weekly news item. But yeah, we're quite, very proud of this little project.
Yeah, I hope everyone has signed up for the daily news blast from Westford CAT. It's sort of addictive, every morning to take a look at the stories that are happening in town. Questions for the board from, for Bob and Sarah? Chris?
Yeah, you mentioned that some of the cats that are in surrounding communities are either funded by their local governments partially or in whole?
But they, they have the same funding source, but they, the money goes directly to them. They run the CAT system. It is not an independent nonprofit.
It's a town department. Littleton, Shelsford, Tingsborough, Groton, they're all, it's a town department.
In your minds, what would be the benefit of having a town department run, you know, CAT versus what we have today?
I don't see a benefit of it.
The question, what are some of the cons, then?
Well, I think in our case, where we are actively publishing the news, to keep the news separate from the government is a pretty critical part of that. I think it adds a lot of, I think our news adds a lot of value to the community. And, you know, we do fundraising to really kind of protect that and keep it separate from, you know, the town.
So if you were to receive some sort of subsidy from the town to cover, you know, budgetary shortfalls, would that make you less impartial potentially, or make people view you as being less impartial?
I think if it was covering the community access, the cable access to the government programs, that's, that's a separate, we can separate that out, make that distinction.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess the, so this, this train's been coming for a while, so I guess the question for us is how do we think creatively, and I appreciate you looking at what other communities are doing. I guess is, is the best thing for us to do just to stay tuned together, and as you, as you, as we get closer to years that have a forecasted shortfall, get back together again and decide.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see that happening for quite a while. I mean, we'll have to look at how the negotiations go in two years. We'll have a contract, I would imagine, with Comcast and Verizon, and then we'll have a better idea of what we're looking at.
And this process actually starts, because the next thing you'll see is ascertainment and beginning the process of negotiating the Verizon contract, which is up next year, right? Twenty, twenty-four, yeah. And then after that is the Comcast, which comes due, I think, in the spring of '25. But what Verizon does is they wait to see what the deal is with Comcast, and then they'll pretty much duplicate them.
They'll match it.
So we're looking, we can't get any more under present rules. We can't get any more than we get on subscriber, the 5% markup of subscriber fees. That's the maximum. If they increase revenues from subscribers, then the 5% gives you more, but it's, that's what we're forecasting to continue to decline. Second part of it is, goes into capital. And the odd thing about this is that if you get money for capital and you don't expend it, you can put it towards operations. So we're looking to increase, there hasn't been an increase in capital provided in quite some time. If you look at this, this year, it's $10,000.
It's been a flat fee for, for as long as I've known, $10,000 a year for hardly buys a new...
So we're, we're pushing for that to increase every year over the 10-year period. So the, the contract with Comcast is a 10-year contract. Verizon isn't interested in doing anything more than a five-year contract. If you go on Verizon's website, you'll find they don't really sell cable TV anymore. They sell Verizon providing the streaming services. They're, they're really getting themselves out of the business. So that leaves us only with Comcast with regard to the long term. And we don't, we, we're not showing a five-year drop-off as if Verizon's going to drop out at that point, but they, they have no interest in having a longer-term contract. So I think that brings us to the second part of this, which is...
Please.
You are in, we've, we've started the negotiation, and one part of it is, and you've been notified by Verizon that ascertainment has to be accomplished within six months. And ascertainment's kind of an odd phrase, but essentially, it's, we've been surveying the users to get their input on various things. I don't, it isn't complete yet, and I don't want to talk about early outcomes, but it, some things are surprising, other things are not surprising. Does anybody want to see a major increase in their cost? And the answer is no. But people are willing, based on what it is you're talking about, increasing revenue for, and that's a big part of it, then they might be interested. But, so the ascertainment, I think, should be complete within about a month or so. We're, I, the survey will have been completed. We'll have all of that information, and we can go into Verizon and tell them pretty much what we think about how subscribers think about their service, improvements that they might make, and begin the process of telling them. And what they're going to get back to us with is, well, what is Comcast saying? So we're, we're going to do the same thing with Comcast, even though it's a little early in the process, to continue to press forward with getting more capital money, as much as we can get, and continuing the 5% fee for subscribers. In the long run, I really think we have to figure out some mechanism for funding this that doesn't rely upon one small group of the community, because if you're not a subscriber, you can get virtually everything you get by going through CAT to YouTube and watching live meetings and things like that. So I think we have to figure out how we're actually funding it.
Understood. Questions from the board? Okay. Any questions from the public? For Westford CAT? Okay. Good. Well, thank you. We really appreciate the update, and let's stay connected as, it's come up in previous meetings, there is a healthy reserve, so we're not facing any kind of short-term crisis, but once it looks like we're, you know, facing hard questions about services and funding, we should get back together and talk about it together.
The main thing that's coming forward is we, the CAC will continue its negotiations with both Comcast and Verizon, so it's going to come back with franchise agreements, which may affect the never-end of agreement between Westford CAT and the board. And you'll have that kind of work to do, but that's sometime within, probably within the next six months.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good, oh, I'm sorry. Mike, do you have a question? See your hand, Mike.
Yeah, I wanted to mention, we had a second item we needed to talk about, actually, which was the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Review process, and we wanted to know to what extent the select board wanted to be involved in that discussion, and if you had any thoughts on a date that we would do it.
Involved in scheduling? Why don't we, why don't we see, since it's a scheduling issue and we're going to be sorting out dates, why don't we ask Kristin to kind of play referee, and maybe we'll circulate some dates and try to pick ones, indicate when more of us will be available?
Yeah, and I think... Okay. So one of the, one of the questions, though, about that was, did you want us to do it as a separate event, which seems to have been what happened last time? Or did you want us to do it as part of a select board meeting, the public hearing on the cable TV renewal?
I'm trying to remember what the...
I believe it's a statutory requirement that we have to have a public hearing on it.
Yes. But you can do it within your select board meeting, or you can have a separate public hearing with the Cable Advisory Committee. public hearing with the cable advisory committee.
What's the typical duration of of the public hearing Mike do you remember?
I did well I I found the agenda for the previous one but I couldn't find any minutes from it.
I guess my sense is if it's a if it's a ten fifteen twenty minute item it probably does fit one of our meetings but if it's.
It depends on how many members of the public come and speak for again so I don't know if we can actually forecast how long it may take we could always start it at the select board meeting and continue it to another date if you continue going or you could have it in your meeting or you could separate it out how there's just kind of three options.
Okay I mean my sense just because we're entering what's gonna be a pretty complicated budget season is that maybe we would want to schedule it at a separate time but try to do it at a time that many of us could join so.
Okay.
Thanks thanks Mike.
So a separate a separate meeting is the answer is that what I'm hearing?
I guess I mean if I think about what our schedule looks like once we get to January we got meetings with FinCom every every Thursday we get pretty full calendars so it may work better to actually have on a Tuesday and then continue it if depend where it falls on the in the budget cycle but six months it could be right back in the middle of the budget meetings too.
Yeah this and I should have brought it up with ascertainment and Mike knew that I was gonna forget to do this that ascertainment part of ascertainment is this public hearing that's kind of the where we present the findings and then the public has a chance to so we were thinking more November-ish somewhere and I don't think I don't think we're gonna have a huge turnout based on what the survey has shown so far.
Okay I guess since it's scheduling and we're talking about like our diaries I guess maybe we can take this offline and.
Sure.
It sounds like what I'm hearing is that if it does fit in an existing agenda and it's relatively prescribed it makes sense for it to be in a meeting why don't we why don't we line up the timings and see if there is an opportunity to get you on the schedule and if there's not we'll recommend that we do a separate meeting so I guess Mike what I'm what I'm proposing is that we take this up offline via Kristen.
Okay.
Okay thanks Mike.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay next up is eight P M item which is review comparison of solid waste and recycling proposals received by Waste Management and E.L. Harvey for fiscal twenty five through twenty nine authorized the town manager to enter into negotiations with the selected vendor I think there's a couple parts of this tonight I think we're gonna get an update on just what it is and I know there's some numbers of the recycling commission that are here we want to give you an opportunity to share your thoughts and something for us to decide is the recycling commission was not able to hold a meeting in anticipation of this so we're gonna hear from individuals but not their group so one of our decision points will be you know is there part of this that we can hold back on and wait is that productive so that we can actually let them meet and formulate input to us as a committee so with that in mind.
Great so as we previewed at your last meeting based upon some work that the Budget Task Force had done we went back out to solicit a bid from E.L. Harvey in comparison to the Waste Management quote that we had been working on and tonight we'd like to present to you the differences in those two contracts I think there's a lot of pros and cons based upon both one contract is clearly a more financially viable version but again we want to present the pros and cons I'm gonna have Dan talk to the financial aspect and then I will go through the pros and cons and please feel free to either stop us along the way or we're happy to answer questions as we go so I'll turn that over to Dan.
Great so here are the two contracts side by side by fiscal year on the left is E.L. Harvey on the right is Waste Management as you can see right away the variance on the bottom right corner is eight hundred and forty one thousand dollars that's how much E.L. Harvey's proposal is under Waste Management's what that I will add is that the original variance was about one point seven million dollars Waste Management was given the opportunity to come back and they they lowered their their prices and offered to buy the town sixteen thousand two hundred barrels basically recycling and a solid waste toter for each household but still they are significantly higher at this point the other thing is in year one E.L. Harvey is about seventy thousand dollars more expensive that's because in our original negotiations of Waste Management agreed to defer a hundred and fifty thousand from the first year because of the the budget issues we were telling them about and they added thirty seven thousand five hundred onto each of the the four outlining years that's that's really the the big overview if we want to get into the pros and cons.
Sure so with the Harvey proposal again Dan went over the estimated cost savings of a little over eight hundred thousand dollars over the life of the five year contract they are proposing manual collection which is currently what the town of Westford has right now for both solid waste and recycling therefore no need to purchase carts either the town purchasing or the hauler purchasing we believe that this may be put us in a better position for possible implementation of a pay as you throw type of program the Harvey proposal did not have a fuel surcharge as part of their contract provision they believe that the bulk item processing would remain the same that the town would manage those stickers they are willing to match our blended value compositions related to recycling currently provided under the Waste Management contract their processing fee for recycling would be a hundred thousand dollar excuse me a hundred dollars in fiscal twenty five versus the hundred and twenty five under the Waste Management proposal and this would be unlimited recycling so no ninety six gallon toters so unlimited biweekly recycling some of the cons that we see related to this proposal is that we will likely see the same solid waste tonnage as we see today it would not be limited as we would not be limiting during doing due to barrels under the existing provisions there could be a provision that we could limit through our policies and procedures the number of barrels that people could have out at their households there would be no standardized collection containers so the the toters provide for that aesthetically pleasing opportunity and also those closed bins in that purchase the collection vehicles would be fueled by diesel as our understanding not C N G that the Waste Management proposal provides and the solid waste disposal would remain under Covanta which is projected to be about seventy two thousand dollars and we did include that cost in the chart that Dan showed you so moving on we just wanted to show the pros and cons related to the Waste Management proposal as we see them pros the standardized carts would be provided to each household to be funded by Waste Management Waste Management would own those carts it was still to be determined whether the select board would like the thirty two gallon carts or the sixty four gallon carts for the solid waste and it was seeming that we would be going towards the ninety six gallon toters for recycling the vendor proposes to collect solid waste and recycling with C N G so compressed natural gas they are our current vendor so they're familiar with the town's roots and procedures specifically as it relates to recycling right now they are looking at an eighty nine dollar a ton for solid waste disposal if they take it to their alternative site as Dan mentioned in the first slide they're willing to defer a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the first year and that would be supplemented in those out years and they would be administering the bulky item bulky waste program through their systems what we see as cons is obviously overall pricing is not as competitive as Harvey there's a history of issues related to the customer service line we were assured that they were working on that if there were overflow solid waste bags it would be a dollar fifty per bag that we would automatically need to be paying to Waste Management and then we would be managing a bag program for residents to buy those overflow bags at a convenience store or a grocery store they do have a fuel surge excuse me fuel surcharge provision in their contract and we believe that potentially leaving Covanta's site would limit our future ability to do to dump our solid waste in the future they're proposing a tiered bulk item disposal rate I won't read it but it does tier up over time and the residential recycling would be limited to a maximum of ninety six gallons collected biweekly we did clarify this with Waste Management and they did say that residents could request a second recycling barrel that would be six dollars a month per residence which constitutes seventy two dollars per year per resident so there would be a management cost that we'd have to bake in there as well as how would we get residents those second carts and then how would we verify that so we just have a few questions for consideration if E.L. Harvey is selected versus Waste Management would the town consider reducing their three barrel limit for solid waste to something different could we consider an increase to our bulk waste disposal fee from five dollars which we've seen in the market is very very low compared to our comparable communities and then consider implementing a pay as you throw program if the board so desires that so with that we're happy to answer any questions that the board has and I know the recycling commission did have a few comments I think as they speak on behalf of themselves this evening perhaps.
Let's first go to questions from the board. Nothing nothing off the bat okay so if there are any comments from the recycling commission we'd love to hear those I guess these are individual members since you haven't had a chance to meet.
Hi Elizabeth Sawyer Holly Lane member of the recycling commission at this point I just have questions I was unsure if the chart that showed the comparison of the two proposals includes the the tipping fees or is this just the cost to send the trucks around to town?
It does include the tipping fees.
With the projected volumes of waste?
Yes.
Okay based on current volumes?
Based on current volumes and.
The three.
They were consistent from with each proposal.
Great great that's helpful thank you in terms of the bulk sticker charges that Waste Management would be charging does that cover the cost to dispose of that items or those costs at twenty dollars a sticker or a a bulk item just the cost for them to stick it in the truck?
The Waste Management.
Excuse me yes the Waste Management.
They would they would take care of everything basically the the resident would contact Waste Management probably through an app I think they have and they would just pay them directly and they would come out and schedule a view so the town would be out of the process.
And sorry to pursue it a little further but just looking at actual bills to the town and so if the waste is taken in that way then there is no subsequent bill from Covanta for incineration for those items or whoever.
For the burnable goods yes for the twenty dollar items yes.
Great thank you and then what is the way in which the E.L. Harvey contract could position us better for a pay as you throw program where the goal is diverting waste?
Sure so the E.L. Harvey program is a manual collection so the town could implement the pay as you throw bags where residents would go to the supermarket or the convenience store and buy the bags so they're self limiting really how much they want to pay for their solid waste with Waste Management proposal we could potentially implement a pay as you throw like pay it per your container but that's a little bit more difficult to do.
Right. And my last question is did we did we get any sense for how Waste Management thought one ninety six barrel was a was a good starting point is it is it because the commodities market is low and so i- is it the spirit of trying to recognize that recycling is like Plan F or is it just their their you know own you know corporate interest to cap it?
My understanding is that's what they're seeing in the market out there for their pickups they've certainly seen communities recycle more and that's why they offer that extra toter if they wish but they see that the average single family household from the residents that they pick up is generally a ninety six gallon every two weeks.
Okay. Okay. I hope the recycling commission can can talk through it we did put this on our agenda through open meeting it's been it will be published in time for our Thursday meeting if that can meet the other towns needs around next steps thank you.
Thank you. Yes please come on up.
Hi I'm Chris Erickson I live at forty one Keys Road I'm also on the recycling commission along with Elizabeth and I guess just some comments you know we have a decision to make and obviously there are a lot of factors and and I'm sure we'll figure it out but I'd just like to encourage the board to think about you know what's the long term plan to reduce our waste you know this it's part of the mission of the recycling commission to try to get residents to divert trash stuff out of trash either into recycling or reused or donated you know we're constantly providing resources to them to to figure this out my data's a little old but I went to a mass D E P webinar a couple years ago and and they said that we dispose in the state of four million tons of trash a year four million tons in the state and one point five million outside the state we have seven combustors like the ones that you know like the Covanta one that we use we have five landfills we have nine recycling recovery sorting facilities our trash is twenty eight percent food waste so I guess my question is you know and actually bring it around to Westford in Westford and thank you to Christina for the statistic because she's been working on some analysis for the budget task force Westford residents toss about eighteen percent more trash than average you know why in this town do our residents have to throw out more trash you know what is it about Westford these are things we talk about but no matter what this decision is we we just need a long term plan to reduce our waste we can try to reduce the costs right now of which way we go but the only way we'll really reduce cost is to throw out less trash how are we gonna figure that out and given that according to the D P our you know the food waste is twenty eight percent of of our trash what's the what's the plan for for composting you know for getting composting going because that's almost thirty percent of the trash that we're paying to get taken to the incinerator and burned which is organic waste you know so not economic sense and certainly not common sense so I just encourage the board to to think about that and partnering with us and others to to put together a plan for reducing our waste and increasing composting.
Thank you so Ken sent me an email over the weekend Ken's the one of the chairs of the recycling commission and I asked if if we could get your help in suggesting some programming that's been effective elsewhere and even if that costs a little bit of money I would rather see a like a ARPA request come before this board that says these targeted things have been effective we think it's gonna have a long term payback we we do need that strategy and I think we're in need of your help to make sure it's a good strategy so whether it's the next time you come before us or if if the scope of this is gonna take a couple months you know that was a request I I put to Ken in the email is is if you could help us and if there's some money attached let's talk about it if if that you know ideally there's none but if there's some we should talk about it and maybe consider an ARPA grant for that because it is a it is a big problem we're an outlier and it it doesn't make any sense so I agree.
Okay thank you Tom.
I mean I I get the eighteen percent is that based is that per capita is that for household because I mean it's also demographics right Westford is a relatively young town with a large child population so each household may have more trash than the average household because you've got more people in the household whereas per capita it should kind of average out.
I believe it's per household that we're talking about.
Are you talking the eighteen the eighteen percent over that was per household?
Yeah so that may be part of the demographics too.
Yeah yeah Scott I got some updated data just today from Julia Green who's our kind of rep with the D E P she we're part of one of the towns she's assigned to work with you know I can send that to you because it really town by town compares you know per household what we throw out versus our neighbors.
I agree I would love to see a I mean I got a community garden plot we would love compost right so some kind of organized process for that would be very very good for a lot of reasons.
It also came up in some of the work we were doing that I think the pay as you throw neighbors that we have that are pretty similar demographically to us I think they've got something like a thirty percent less trash so it it's it's a real number and it's an interesting analysis we can do it looking at towns more like us to see how that number shifts maybe we should but it's still a big number so thank you for that. Any other comments please come on up.
Elizabeth Sawyer again from the recycling commission speaking on behalf of myself when we talk about pay as you throw it's often a a phrase that incites a lot of you know strong feelings in in people so I just wanted to put a few key points by it as as you know as we think about reducing waste in terms of the D E P the real goal with pay as you throw is not to have the cost of the trash shift from tax dollars to residents it really is to have the stuff not go in the trash and there are many many ways to do that composting is one the readily available electronics collections Westward Cat has a passive fund rosair around electronics Staples and Best Buy do it year round it it is an environmental call to action as much as a you know for individual towns that our trash is far more toxic than it was twenty ten years ago and so the the call to action is to get this waste out of our air and water by diverting it and along the way you save your town and your residents money.
Thank you. Okay any other comments or questions on this agenda for now I guess the question is do we have time to get the formal input in in our next meeting before you need an answer or do you basically need an answer tonight?
until your October meeting, but I think that that's really your second October meeting, but I think that's really the drop deadline. So if we can receive some information from the Recycling Commission for your input, if anyone else has any questions or comments that we could receive this week, we can work out those details next week and then have something ready for you the second meeting in October.
Okay. Why don't we do that? I'd like to hear input from the committee.
Specifically, I would like to hear the Recycling Commission's viewpoint on the three items on the last slide that you have. I think that would be helpful information for me.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, members of the Recycling Commission, for joining us tonight. We are now at the eight-twenty item, which is all new business. First is discuss Amaresco's revised preliminary energy audit. It is September fourteenth, and review and act on next steps regarding the investment grade audit. And I guess we have Dan and Beth joining us.
Right, so the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee met again after your most recent presentation from Beth Greenblatt and Amaresco, and I believe they have a recommendation to present to you this evening. We also have Dan and Beth on the line, in case there's any technical comments or questions that the board can ask those questions of them at this time. And I believe Mike Berlinski is here in the room, if you'd like him to present to you as well.
Yeah, Mike, if you could please, so the recommendation was in our packet, thank you very much for that, and numbers were able to join your meeting. But yeah, if you could just give us a summary of what the position of your committee is, that'd be great.
Yeah, great, thank you. Mike Berlinski, Chair of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. So, right, as I was here last time, we did have one meeting, and we got a lot of information from Beth and the folks from Amaresco and town staff, and we had another meeting, and we did vote to recommend to you that the good package from the preliminary audit be the scope for the investment-grade audit. But not, and that would include one additional project with the museum building and the measures associated with that. So that's the recommendation for the investment-grade audit. And then, when the Westward Academy roof project needs to be done, because we understand it's going to need to be done soon, to do that in a green manner, and what we mean by that is consider partial electrification and solar. And that is discussed in the preliminary report. So that is the recommendation. It would be great to do the better package, all of it, right now, but because of concerns with budget and other factors, you know, a lot of, you know, learning information where things are, that's the recommendation to go with the good package plus museum, and then when the Academy roof is done, consider electrification and solar.
Thanks, Mike, and thanks for the work of your committee. Questions from the board regarding which path we want to follow, or any questions for the committee?
I agree with the proposal. I mean, listen to all that, and with the good, you get eighty-five percent of the reduction, and then the other adds another fifteen percent. So I think we get most of the reduction and then a reasonable number. So I think that's a good idea. I agree with that.
I agree.
Yep, that's right. Okay, so I think we can vote to go ahead and finalize that. Dan, I think you did look at, this is a longer conversation, but with regards to the Westward Academy roof, because the cost of the roof replacement itself was embedded in that number, it was interesting, at least to me, to try to compare how much extra is in there, and what's the payback on the extra stuff that's in there that's not the actual, you know, just replacing the roof. I think it sounds like we can deal with that a different day, but if you had done some research that would help us understand that, that'd be helpful.
Absolutely.
So Dan?
Yep.
Okay. So why don't we put a pin in that, because I think that's a bigger piece of work. So it sounds like we're in consensus. I guess with that in mind, I would entertain a motion to basically proceed with the good plan, plus the electrification of the museum for the IGA. And after we take that vote, I'll want an update from you, Dan, about are we still on track potentially for our Springtown meeting? But I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
In a second. Okay, all in favor? Okay. Dan and Beth, does that give you what you need for now?
It does.
Okay.
And thanks and gratitude to the committee and the team and town staff for their thoughtful consideration of the project. We're thrilled to get started and continue our work together, so thank you very much.
Okay, and are we still on timeline, Dan and Beth, for Springtown meeting?
Yeah, we will be. So we're going to get a cadence of calls with town staff, probably weekly to start, weekly, biweekly, consistent check-in, so what information can be shared with all stakeholders as we develop and develop the work in preparation for being on the warrant for January.
Okay. From March, yeah, the warrant. The warrant for January, but the meeting in March.
January, to sign the warrant in January, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Right, okay. Thank you, Dan, thank you, Beth. We appreciate it, and thank you for your engagement with the Clean Energy Committee. I think that was really productive and helped surface a lot of good questions and answers, so thank you.
Thank you. Night.
Okay, thank you, good night. Next up is request for letter of support for the proposed changes to the state laws pertaining to municipal electrical aggregation programs. Sue, thank you, I saw the letter in the packet, it looks like it makes a lot of sense, but if you could just help us understand what the change is? How is it different than what's going on now? What are we asking for here?
Okay. Big picture, what's going on now? Well, the community aggregation programs bring huge benefits to the communities that already have them.
Right.
In savings and in clean energy incentives, and price stability in the market. And Westford's benefited that, for that for many years now, but there are many communities still waiting for approval for their community aggregations for between a year and a half to four years, depending on the complexity of their program. So that's the incentive behind this new legislation, would be to pull those communities out of that line and move their aggregations forward, so they can benefit as Westford has. But the reason there's such a long delay is the regulatory authority of the agency is so in-depth and detail-oriented that their reviews are incredibly extensive. And any conclusion they reach with a new aggregation is backward- applied to existing aggregations. So that leaves our aggregation at risk if, in the event that they make some sort of ruling that changes the way we've set up our program. So the new legislation suggests and would create a new regulatory environment where the structure of the aggregations and the intent of them would remain the same, but the micromanaging, for example, if we wanted to change the name of one of the products that we offer, or we wanted to change the clean energy composition of that product, or we wanted to change the group that we go out to bid for our energy with, all of those things currently would have to go back through that regulatory line, and we would have to wait. Or we would have to change, perhaps mid-contract, if they don't, they make a change in naming convention, and run the risk of confusing our residents mid-contract, because suddenly the energy supplier that they buy has a new name. So the benefit of this legislation, it protects the town local rural capacity for creating a program that fits with our residents and small business needs, and protects us from sort of this backward regulation policy, while preserving the integrity of community aggregations as it was intended by the original legislation. Because these instruments are subject to greater regulation than other suppliers in the market, and yet they're a public good, where those other suppliers are more of a private profit model, so to speak. So that's why I've come before you to ask if you would be willing to sign the particular letter in your packet, and beyond that, if you would be willing to delegate authority to the town manager's office, if there are ongoing sort of iterations of this legislation that require additional advocacy. Because as you're probably aware, these things take a long time, and they do come up with different versions. So rather than coming before you, you know, routinely during the course of this moving its way through the legislature, if you are willing to delegate that authority to town staff, we could take that forward.
Okay, thanks, very clearly explained. Any questions? Yep, John?
Sue, one of the things in this new legislation, they talk about changing that timeframe for approval to ninety days, and that if they don't get the approval, ninety days, whatever plan you have is accepted. Did you see that?
I did see that.
So that's changed. There was a concern expressed in the committee the other day, about if you have the basic, it's an opt-out program, so you're automatically included in the basic. And then the concern was, if you had a different level, like we, I think we've adopted different levels, we've gone more than the basic, you'd have to reapply, or you'd have to do something to get back in or stay in?
Yeah.
Is that true?
Let me clarify. So there are two discussions that are ongoing right now. There's sort of the regulatory and legislative environment with regard to aggregations in general, and then Westford is also about to move from one contract with our energy supplier to the next contract, three-year term. So the legislation and the new regulation that's being proposed would make it so that, I believe there's actually a clause in there to address the issue that you're talking about. So right now, as we go from, you know, October to January, our residents who are currently in the aggregation, who are in the default, have to do nothing. But our residents who have opted up to a fifty percent or a hundred percent clean plan within Westford Pop will be required to affirmatively state that they want to stay in the program, and otherwise will be kicked out to national-grade basic service, which is a much more expensive option. So we do, it puts our sort of most committed and energy consumers in the clean energy environment in this position of having to take an extra step. The new legislation has asked that that be changed, and that's something we want to change, but right now, we are stuck with that, and we've been waiting for our supplier, Good Energy, to provide us with template publicity, because that's part of what they supply us as part of the contract, and language. So we have very clear and consistent messaging about that to our customers, and it's sitting at a million bucks right now, but I haven't, like, completely digested what that looks like. But we hope to get that out for special town meeting in some form for residents to start to get that word out to people.
So that's your job, do that, or the committee's?
Well, I'm going to work with my working group, which is Tom Teller, who's here, and Matt Rehert, to make sure that all that happens. So it's sort of, a lot of my work is collaborative with the committee, and we have experts in different areas.
I think the changes are good. I think they'll support the letter.
Yeah, I agree. Any other comments? Any comments from the public? Okay, I will entertain a motion to endorse the letter of support and delegate to the town manager any further support and action required on this matter.
So moved.
A second? All in favor? Okay, thank you, thank you, Sue.
Thanks so much.
Have a good night. Next up, board reports and updates. Any board reports and updates in the group?
I don't have any mine.
The Budget Task Force will be releasing the draft report tomorrow, which you'll have a chance to, will show up in your inbox, you'll have a chance to review it in between now and the eighteenth. Anything else for board reports and updates? Okay. Kristen, you're up, town manager's report.
Great. So we have two grants that I'd like your approval to accept. We applied for and received a Community Compact Best Practices grant to partially fund the town-wide strategic plan project, and this is mostly to help with the outreach and the community engagement, which I know we've talked a lot about. Just a reminder, this board authorized ninety-five thousand dollars for ARPA funding for that strategic planning project. This would supplement that, or we could draw down this, obviously, first, and then use the ARPA funds extra. Some ARPA funds most likely would be returned. We did receive five proposals, and I'm working on going through those, developing a working group. Andrea has agreed to do that, so she'll be reviewing and ranking those proposals in the next week or two, and then having interviews with potential groups, and hopefully getting that project off, I would think, mid-November timeframe at this point. But this is very exciting that we have this supplement to help us. And then the second is a Mass DEP, so Department of Environmental Protection, for Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, municipal grant in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. This has been facilitated by the Recycling Commission, so it would request your approval to accept those grants.
Well, congratulations to everyone who worked so hard to get these. It's incredible. Great add to the town. Any questions or comments on those first two? Motion approved?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Thank you. And then I'd ask that we hold the Covanta contract. This really goes hand in glove with the solid waste and the recycling contract, so I'd like to hold that until we're ready to vote on that matter.
Okay.
I'd like to ask a question about that. Is that the same contract we have now?
So we do have a contract right now with Covanta for our tipping. This is, it would be a revised and new contract, but with Covanta as well.
The terms and conditions are pretty much the same.
Correct.
Okay. Well, ladies and gentlemen, this is bringing us very close to the end. Do I have a motion to waive the reading of correspondence? Or are there any questions on correspondence?
One of the correspondence was a foreclosure. I guess, how does that apply to us?
Well, that's a, I think that's a private.
Yeah, we just received that as correspondence, because we were just listed as somewhere, Town of Westford, so there's nothing we need to take action on it.
It seemed kind of strange to me, so, okay, great.
Okay, I didn't mean to jump in. Any other questions about correspondence? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of correspondence. A second? All those in favor? And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor? Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone. Have a good night, Westford.